Thank you, everyone who is, who ultimately will be watching. Welcome to the Audit Subcommittee Meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now 3:48 on August 19th. And we are also joined by my colleague, Counselor Davila, who just joined us. And we will get started. Mr. No, I will turn it over to you. Although, if at all possible, if we could start with the report of the alleged investigative, of the alleged theft of city wood.
Yes.
Start there and then we can go to the, to the other item.
Okay, so I'll start off with our first investigative report and I'll share my screen. I'm able to. Oh, okay, I think you need to.
Do I need to?
Share your screen of that report.
So I can't give you the.
You can give me the, I don't have rights to share.
Can you share now?
Let's see if that, that works. Oh, yeah, that works. So let me see if I can find the board. So I presume you guys see the report on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start out with this report. This report has to do with an investigation of alleged theft of city wood and misuse of city resources at the forestry department, at the Parks Division. So I'll turn to page one of our report that discusses the allegation. So in 2018, we received an allegation about an employee that was stealing wood. This employee was a foreman at the forestry and he was taking the wood with his friend. He would use city resources such as the loader, a truck loader, to load the city wood onto his friend's vehicle. And they would sell the wood and split the proceeds. So we looked into the allegation. We deployed a hunting camera over at Facilities Yard at the Park Department. So I don't know if you've ever been to Forest Park and back of the facilities or the administrative building back of Forest Park. That's where they have a lot of equipment and further back, they used to store logs there. It's kind of out of the way and they do have police that monitor the area at times just to make sure that no unauthorized persons are supposed to be back there. So going back to, just moving on to what we found as a result of our investigation. So we found evidence that the taking of the wood constituted an ethics violation because this individual was in a position to have access to a resources, to a resource that had value and was giving it to his friend. So the value was determined by a city forester, Alex Sherman. We interviewed him and he said that that wood, even though the city paid to dispose of it, had a value to an outside person because it had a value between $50 to $100 based upon the video footage that I showed him. So when you have, when you're in a position to give something of value to yourself or to your friend, that's an ethical violation because he's, he used his position to, I guess, conduct that activity. We did not find any evidence that the taking of the wood actually constituted theft because the, the wood didn't actually represent a physical asset. The city didn't really value it. It actually had paid the contractor to dispose of the wood. So in that regard, the city wasn't out anything by the wood being taken away. It was, our investigation just resulted in an ethical violation committed by this employee. And the criteria that we looked at, I'll turn to page, this page here, page three, is Mass General Law, Section 263A. A section 23 says municipal employee may not use his official position to get something worth $50 or more for someone else that would not be properly available to other similarly situated individuals. So we also compared with Pat Sullivan. He's the director of Parks. Whether he authorized this employee to take the wood and he confirmed that he did not give such authorization. So this employee was acting on his own. And I'll go over the evidence in terms of what we looked at. Turning to page seven. So actually, this exhibit represents his friend's home. You can see the, well, you can see it, but there's a lot of woods stored at his home. And you can see the vehicle used to transport the wood here. And this is where we deployed the hunting camera on the facilities yard. You can see the loader here, the truck loader, taking the wood. And you could see the employee's friend actually measuring the wood. So we don't know what, we weren't able to prove why he, why he was measuring the wood. We think, we have a theory that measuring the wood to sell it, but we couldn't find any proof that he actually sold the wood. When we interviewed this employee's friend, he indicated that he just took the wood for firewood. But if you were to take the wood for firewood, we don't understand why he would measure it. Normally when you take wood, you just chop it up, don't care how long, you know, how long it is. So, but as I said, we didn't find any proof that this wood was ultimately sold. And we also included pictures that we received from the tipster where the vehicle was on site, the friend's vehicle, the white vehicle, and another picture of showing the loader putting the wood onto this person's vehicle, or this his friend's vehicle. So just an update, so this ethics violation was referred to the city. The city disciplined the employee. The employee contested it through his union and the matter was finally adjudicated this year, 2021. So our process in terms of presenting our investigative reports, we wait until the matter is fully adjudicated before presenting it to the Audit Committee and publishing it to the public. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? And thank you, Counselor Whitfield, for joining us. Are there any questions?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Davila.
Thank you. Good to see you, Auditor. Just a quick question. You did say that the wood didn't have any real value to the city, but it had a value to others. Can you quantify that amount?
So, well, we can't quantify the amount because, well, we're not in a position to know the value. When we, when we interviewed Alex Sherman, the city forester, he's in a role to know the value of what, as his role as a city forester. So he indicated that in this footage here, the logs here, he says, it looks to be about a cord or have a cord or two cord, which has a minimum value of $50 to $100. So that's what he told me what the value was with this particular wood. Now, the, the city doesn't value this wood. It isn't, you know, recorded as an asset on its financial statements. It paid to have this wood disposed of by Coventa, which was a vendor based out of Bondi's Island. I believe the State Department shut them down because of some environmental violations. What the city has now is, the city disposes of the wood at tapestry at no cost.
Okay, all right, thank you. And are you liberated to state what the final adjudication was?
Excuse me?
Are you are liberated to say what the final adjudication was of the employee?
It's a personnel matter. Don't go into how that's adjudicated.
I understand. Okay. All right. Thank you, Auditor. Thank you, Ambassador Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council?
I'm sorry I was late. So the person was found at fault for?
Yes, the person was disciplined by the city.
All right.
Is that all? Counselor Whitfield?
Yeah, that was it. How long, well, how long did this process take?
It, it took a while because we got the tip in late 2018. And, you know, we conducted this investigation. We deployed hunting cameras at the facilities yard and that took about like three or four months. Then, then we issued our report in mid-2019. Then the city disciplined them in 2019. Then the employee contested it through their union. COVID hit, then the process finally resumed in 2021 and got resolved this year, 2021.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions on this particular item, Mr. No, we can move to the next agenda item, which is the misrepresentation of hours worked and misuse of city resources.
Okay, so I'll see if I can share my screen again. All right, so share screen. All right, so everyone should see this PDF. So I will just give you an overview of this investigation before getting into the details. So we received a tip from the Human Resources Director about a city employee who worked for Housing, was an investigator for Housing. He was doing private home inspections while on city time. And we also got another tip from this employee supervisor indicating that this employee was using city equipment, in particular radar machine, at his private business. So we got this tip in December of 2020. And we, before we conduct an investigation, we try to ensure there's predication that there's actually substance to the allegation. So what we do, we contact the person who made the tip. We contacted the person who made, made the allegation to our HR Director. And he was able to substantiate that this employee, who was a city, who was a city employee, actually did the investigation as a private home inspector. Because this, the person who was given the tip was actually the seller of the home that this employee was a private, private home inspector. So we, we got into it. We looked through, we were able to access this employee's city equipment, in particular his laptop and his radar machine. And what we found was a lot of investigative, a lot of home inspection reports that he issued to private clients on his personal computer. So on, hey, I'll turn you on page. This is the, this is the summary of all the inspection reports that we were able to find. The inspection reports were dated and time stamped. And we cross-checked that to his work hours and phone notes. And we noted that when he did the investigation, he was supposed to be working for the city. So, you know, there lies the conflict when you have conflicting duties as a city employee and you have a, you know, another job that conflicts with your duties. That, that is an ethical violation. I think it's 263A. Let me check this page right here. It says, I mean, this one on page six, Mass General Laws, 268A, Section 23, municipal employee may not use his official position. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a wrong one. It is MGL 268A, Section 23B. No current officer or employee may accept other employment involving compensation of substantial value, the responsibilities of which are inherently incompatible with the responsibilities of this public office. So that's the ethics violation that we found. We also looked through the city equipment. He was using his computer to write, write contract estimates. His radar, he looked through his radar machine, radar machine that was issued by the city had a retail value of like $1,300. And a typical radar test will run you about $275. So these radar machines generate logs to indicate, to generate reports. And the logs have addresses. So we cross-check those addresses to the Healthy Home Program. And noted that none of those addresses were matched or were on the Healthy Home Program. So they appear to be private home addresses, which also included his home address that, that he used the radar machine for. And I'll show you what the report actually looks like. Right here. So this is a typical radar machine inspection report. This is a radar test that was performed at his, at his home. And last, we also checked his Facebook page. We noted that he had a Facebook page that advertised his home inspection business. And you could make, someone who wanted inspection services could make an appointment. He listed out the appointment dates or availability and these are his working hours. These are, these are times when he, that he's supposed to be working. So there's also a, a conflict there. So ultimately, we presented this report to his supervisor. The employee had a hearing. The employee was also afforded the opportunity to respond to our findings. And that is actually on the back of his report here. So this is his response. Basically, he indicated that he was authorized to do his side work by his supervisor. But when we interviewed his supervisors, the supervisors did not authorize this employee to have a side business while on city, at city time. So as I mentioned, he had a hearing and the city, he ended up ultimately being terminated from his employment. And that happened in March of 2021.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. No. Are there any questions from counselors?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just.
Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Auditor, I, thank you for the report and my thorough explanation and briefing. I guess, I guess what's, first of all, I, I'm troubled by this, by this, that somebody's running a side business while city time is definitely not acceptable by any means. But I cannot help to think as to what kind of supervisory management this, was this guy being provided that he feels so comfortable to advertise a side business on Facebook and put his work hours time as part of his business times. Are you, did you have, do you have any comments about that? Anything in the report has comments about?
Well, yeah, that was, that was, well, I do have to say that his supervisor did bring us the allegation that the equipment was being used for a side business. He needed to eventually catch on that something arrived, was happening. But it, it is critical that as a supervisor, you should have a deep understanding of what your employees are doing.
Right.
I think this guy, this employee as an inspector wasn't necessarily in the office a lot. He was doing, supposedly going out and doing home inspections. So it was maybe been more difficult to monitor the work he was doing. But in any event, I do think that this could be an issue, not only here, but throughout city departments. Not monitoring what your employees are doing.
Right, 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 right.
So we're, we're going to get into that because we're, we're in the process of auditing payroll. Okay. So when we do a deeper dive in the payroll, supervisors sign off on the hours that their employees had worked. So we need a deeper understanding of that process.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Auditor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's some more questions.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Whitfield. Did you have anything that you wanted to ask, Mr. No?
Yeah, but not regarding this or the other one.
Okay. All right. So, so Mr. No, I do have a couple of questions regarding this item. I guess my first question is the allegation in December 2020. Who, you said that came from the seller?
Yeah, it came from the seller. The seller made the allegation to the HR department.
Okay.
Then the Director Mahoney contacted me. Then I contacted, I reached out to the actual seller who made the allegation.
Okay. And so the, the seller wrote a, wrote a letter. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And you're privy to that letter, I would imagine. And I'd imagine you perused that letter, correct?
Yes, I perused that letter and, yeah, I verified the content. So everything that was indicated in that, in that letter appeared to be support.
Is there any reason why that letter is not included in the package?
I usually don't, you know, include detailed allegations. I felt as though it was sufficient to say that, you know, an allegation was made.
Got it. Understood, understood. So, so did the Audit Committee find that the property at the heart of the allegation was one of the properties where this city, where this city employee was performing a, a home inspection when he should have been working?
Yes. So as it relates to this specific allegation, he was, he was supposed to be working as a, as a city inspector, but he was actually on site doing a private home inspection.
Okay. So, so for the, the property and the allegation, you're saying, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And so I didn't, was that property listed on page three? Where you had the rest of?
Yes, yes, it was. I usually don't, I don't disclose property addresses for privacy, but it was there.
All right. So, um, so, so let me get to the point, Mr. No. And I guess for, for the sake of time, I'll try to be as brief as, as possible. And, you know, I, I want to let you know that, that I am concerned. I'm concerned because I've been privy to this letter since the individual made the allegation. And I think, you know, while your objective in this particular instance was clearly to focus on the misuse of resources and misrepresentation of hours worked from that particular employee, it also seems to me that, you know, if, if during the course of your investigation, you discover the misuse of city, city resources by other employees, that, you know, you, you may follow up on those leads as well. And, and the reason why I say that is because in the initial allegation letter, where it cited that the inspector, the city employee was double dipping, the letter also states that this same employee switched from being a private home investigator to a city inspector. And it also, and I mean, you know, I'm going to quote it now. It said by calling, they did this by calling the city of Springfield Building Department and issuing a full-blown city inspection of this individual's house. So we got, we got a number of things happening here. We got an employee who's double dipping, an employee who has deterred a potential buyer from buying the property, an employee who's supposed to be on the clock, and then an employee who in turn allegedly calls the building inspector. And it, and I'm paraphrasing now, that there's a full-blown investigation that ensues thereafter. And, you know, while, while it might appear to just be hearsay based off of, you know, if we're just going off of the letter, the allegations against the building department can easily, easily be substantiated or could have easily been substantiated simply by talking to individuals who did the raid that day, all of whom knew that going into the property without the owner's consent, absent an emergency, was wrong.
Right. So if I could.
Go ahead.
If I could just add, we did, I did contact the building inspector.
Okay.
Just to confirm that, hey, was this employee there doing a private home inspection? He did confirm that. I asked, I also asked, were you, did you go into this property without the owner's authorization? The building inspector indicated that he was allowed to go on to the premise by the owner's employee. So the, the owner had, the employee, they were contracted, they were working on the home and the contractor or the employee allowed the building inspector to come on to the premise. He said he would never go into a home, as you said, unless it's an emergency situation without being allowed in.
And, and, and so you, you gotta kind of understand where I'm coming from, Mr. No. Regardless of how it happens, if these are the protocols that the building department is using to conduct an all-out raid on an individual's property, then it's extremely problematic. And it would seem to me that we ought to do some research into those protocols. If somebody is coming in to provide me a service, and this particular gentleman who worked for Housing, that, that's, that's what they do, Mr. No. They, they do lead inspections. You know, they, they're part of the Healthy Homes Program. They provide a variety of different services. And so if at any point in time, someone from Housing can go into someone's house and make a phone call to the building department saying that A, B, C, and D is wrong, and then their building department mobilizes their, their people off of what this housing inspector is, has, has alleged while he's in there supposedly providing a service, that to me seems to be extremely problematic. And to be honest with you, why would anybody call the city for a service that they might need, knowing that they might be in violation or that this particular individual might call the building department or code enforcement? I happened to talk to the inspectors that particular day regarding this issue. They all knew that going into this property was wrong, Mr. No. And so I guess my, you know, what I'd like to see is, is maybe a further investigation that doesn't just stop with the building department commissioner, who was also on the scene. And I know it happens very rarely that the commissioner, the deputy commissioner, the electrical inspector, and the plumbing inspector descend upon a property. the electrical inspector, and the plumbing inspector descend upon a property where the individual had no business being in the first place. And they ought to have known that. So, I, 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 I mean, I would like to see a little bit more done with respect to this audit in terms of what protocols we can put in place to avoid this from happening again. Um, I have to imagine that you ought to be, you, you ought to hear from the owner. I mean, that, 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 that should just be the start before you have four people coming in and, 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 and going through one's property.
Well, I did speak to the owner, uh, who, uh, he was the guy, um, who, who made, who made the, uh, allegation and the, and he indicated he wasn't so, uh, upset about the, um, building inspector and, 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 uh, um, having them onsite. It, it, it was more the, the allegation that this person had no business of, of, of calling the, uh, the building inspector. Um, now, um, you know, my goal here was just strictly looking at the allegation. And I, I interviewed the building inspector to see, did he violate a- any protocols with respect to going on for the premise. And he indicated, he assured me that he did not, because he, he was allowed in by the, uh, employee. So I, my, my, my job was strictly focusing in on the, uh, the double dipping here.
So I, I guess to my point, um, Mr. No, it would seem to me that we ought to expand the scope of this audit, considering everything that, that has gone on. And while the homeowner might not be as concerned, you know, by the, 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 the building department and what it is that they did, um, he, he might be a bit disingenuous in terms of what he has communicated to you because he also has to continue to pull permits and deal with the building department. And so when you talk about twenty-six thousand dollars later, a suspended license and having to pull multiple permits for a property that was getting ready to be sold to this potential buyer. I, 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 I have to believe he's a little disappointed in the building department. But neither here nor there, outside of this individual, I'm not concerned about him. I'm concerned about everybody else who this happens to. And so if there are no protocols in place, I mean, then we need to get them in place.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know what's there, but just saying, having an employee of somebody let you onto the property to do an all-out raid, that to me is not acceptable. Um, and I wouldn't wanna do business if that.
Oh, exactly. So, I mean, this, this is something that, uh, we could take a look at, uh, in terms of how code, um, you know, maybe in a, an honored code, uh, should be discussed, um, in the near future and to see what their protocols are. So that, you know, uh, there are proper protocols in place and that, and, uh, individual homeowner ri- rights are, are protected.
Absolutely.
So that's something that, um, I, I'll be happy to discuss with you, uh, as we develop the audit plan for the upcoming fiscal year.
And that's anybody who, who goes in to, to someone else's dwelling to, you know, provide a service. I mean, I know there are other instances.
Oh, yes, I, I, I totally understand where you're coming. I, I'm a, I'm a, I own multiple properties and I have the same concerns of and that, and not having unauthorized people on your property.
And I, I'm, I'm, I'm also speaking from experience, uh, Mr. No. Um, whether it's politically motivated or not, I know what happens. And so I know this is not the first time, uh, that this has happened in code, um, or building. Sorry, um, any other questions from the counselors?
Yeah, just on that same, um, that same topic or similar. Because I had a person that applied for an emergency loan, you know, emergency repair loan. And they said that when they come in for whatever the person is calling for, let's say it's a roof, they will check every single thing to see if there's other codes. And then if you're not able to get, this is what I was told, if you're not able to get, um, all those things fixed, then you might not qualify for the emergency repair loan for the roof. And so obviously, if they are calling for an emergency repair loan, um, they probably aren't able to fix the other things that come up, um, in a code violation. So I don't know if that should even be part of the process, um, to check for every single thing that's wrong to just, you know, get my roof fixed. Like, right now, this is my core emergency. It might not be some of the other things that's not working a hundred percent. But now I'm disqualified because when code comes in, they check everything. It seems like a setup to disqualify people. And this loan is there to help people get through whatever their emergency is. And so a lot of times folks won't even apply for the loan because if code comes in and look for everything else, um, they know they're not gonna qualify. And now they got all these covi, co-violations that they could be fined for. So it's just like a double-edged sword. Have you heard that, young Adam?
Uh, I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard, uh, anything like that. But, uh, again, as I mentioned, that, uh, as we get into the year and we start developing the audit plan, uh, I'll reach out to the audit committee members and we, and these are the items that I wanna talk to you about. There is that you want our department to focus in on. And I think, uh, this is a, a worthy candidate for, uh, be on our, uh, agenda for the following fiscal year. It's one of the departments that we haven't taken a, a deep dive. And, uh, it's, uh, I think it's, it would, um, um, you know, be in the public interest and the audit committee's interest for us to take a look.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. No. Are there any other questions from the council at this time?
Just that I wanted to just say that I was really confused on, um, what the audit department can handle. I didn't know that, uh, cause I will send you everything that, that I want on it. Well, um, so just for like clarification for anybody that watched the video, you really focus on processes, um, that happen within the city, not?
Yeah, processes, um, um, in, that, that involve internal controls uh, that help, um, uh, departments, um, meet, you know, their operating, uh, mission. So we're process-oriented, but we also do, um, audits of, you know, financial figures. Uh, um, you know, like, yeah, financial statements. Uh, we also do investigations. If there's an allegation of a specific allegation, we, we will do, uh, an investigation to prove whether that, uh, allegation has, um, related to it. So those are the, uh, main types of services that, that we provide. And what we do at the, uh, uh, every year is we have a budget, uh, for special projects. Uh, because we set forth an agenda of all the projects that we're gonna work on for the upcoming year. And we allot, uh, a lots of time for special requests from city management, audit committee, uh, mayor. And as I mentioned, um, as I may have mentioned in the past, you know, this budget's only like three hundred and sixty-four hours. So that could probably handle maybe one or two special requests. Um, but, um, unless, so, so we, we, we try to, you know, keep it, keep it to, you know, um, that budget, uh, otherwise if we take on any more, it could deviate from our audit plan. And, um, it would just make, uh, it's, uh, our, meeting our agenda more difficult.
And do you think you need more staff?
You know, um, I, I, right now, I'm happy with the staff that I have. I hired, uh, Erica Wallace. She's a, a staff auditor, uh, from, um, I think, uh, unemployment associates. So she does have, uh, four years of audit experience. And she's hitting, hitting the ground running, uh, and she's a nice fit. Well, what I like to do is use technology, uh, to help me audit. We, we use data mining tools to go through a lot of data. So I try to be lean and efficient. Uh, so for now, I'm happy.
I'm not. I wanted that way so you'd know, just. But it's already been done. So you said to check with Bill Mahoney and who was it on the school side?
It was, uh, Melissa Shay.
Melissa, okay.
Uh, they are, uh, they have an equity, uh, study done. Um, and they're, um, definitely gonna have one, have another one being performed in the near future.
All right. Thank you, young.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Uh, if there are no further questions from the council, uh, Mr. No, I, I wanna thank you for your time. Um, you know, I think it, I think these, these audits or the idea of auditing, uh, started under the leadership of Counselor Davila. And then it sort of trickled down. And so we recognize how valuable you are, uh, Mr. No in terms of, you know, making sure that everything is going according to the way it should be within the city and within city departments. And so the more we, you know, the more rocks we uncover, the more we're asking of you, which is where I think, uh, Counselor Whitfield, uh, ha- has gone in the last couple of months. So I certainly appreciate, uh, her due diligence. And, um, you know, we appreciate your work, Mr. No, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we look forward to future reports. And thank, thank you, counselors. I appreciate you joining us.
But take care.